All right, the time is 7:14 PM. We will now reconvene back into open session. I want to welcome everybody that's here to join us tonight. Just a little reminder that this is a board meeting. We conduct all our business in open, public forum, but it's not a meeting of the public. If you desire to speak before the board, please... I believe we got the forums back in the back, and then you can get them to Ms. Martin, and we'll put you on the list, and you can be heard. We have before us our board members here. Mr. Carney down on this, by right or left. Mr. Lopez, Mr. Sitten. Vice President, Ms. Morrison. Our past president, Ms. Conrad. And our parliamentarian, Ms. Lamond Dixon. Of course, with the Board Secretary, and that's going to be Ms. Karen Martin. And, last but not least, our Superintendent, Dr. Fagan. So, with that being said, I would ask if you would all please rise for our pledge of allegiance, pledge to the Texas flag. Tonight, we are being greeted by Summer Creek ROTC Army. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. There you go. I would ask that you would please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. May be seated. And once again, we want to thank the Summer Creek Army ROTC. Dr. Fagan, do we have any accommodations, recommendations tonight?
We do, Mr. Cunningham. Recently, a group of young muggles from Timbers and Maple Brook Elementary Schools journeyed to Summer Creek High School on a quest to discover the magic of steam. Led by Professor Legaspe and a group of Summer Creek High School student leaders, the students toured the schools of science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, and gained valuable knowledge, skills, and experiences along the way. Tonight's inspiring moments videotakes us on the magical journey to Hogwarts at the creek.
Welcome, welcome to Summer Creek High School, Hogwarts at the creek.
Today, we had two elementary campuses, and they came and experienced the steam offerings we have here at Summer Creek High School.
How expensive was just this room?
That's what holds wheels in the cars. And this is how we move. How many funses you see here? Yeah, who knows what shape that is? Yeah, okay. Perfect. The lug nuts inside of there.
At Timbers, we just got a 3D printer this year. So, we heard about the Tiny House Project here at Summer Creek, and we wanted to come look at some of the ways that they've done projects, and how that went into service learning.
You can park here.
Originally, it was just her bringing her kids here to look at the 3D printer. I was like, you know what? We can do more than that. And I know we have Tiny Homes Project Architecture doing their thing. We have Aquatic Robotics. We've got art. We've got journalism. We have so much to offer. And I reached out to these teachers. Hey, how would you like to set up a little steam camp for these students, and we can transform our school into Hogwarts? And with the blessing with the administrators and saw the teachers just jumped on board.
And the students got involved at the high school and the teachers, and now we have this whole Hogwarts experience for our kids to experience some steam-based learning and to maybe get some ideas of things they might want to do in the future.
Whenever we walked into the room, I thought it would be way different. Like, this is way cooler than I thought. We went to the arts room, and we got to make mini boomsticks out of scrap paper and light sticks.
My favorite thing was probably the photography. Because that's what... Now I know what I want to do. It's just like, it's cool to take pictures. It would like to capture the moment. Like, you can help your school with a yearbook or do the newspaper or something.
I got to be with the children today. I think that was the best part, because, you know, we're in high school. We don't particularly get to see the kids anymore. And it was very fun to see them and go along the school with them.
One, two, three.
Would not have been the same field trip without the actual students getting involved, because they were the ones that are really showcasing and teaching and leading our groups around. And I think our kids were just in awe and looking up to them and thinking about how they're going to get to do this one day when they're in high school.
The blend of high school and elementary, I've always wanted to transcend. Just, we're not an island. We are a community here at UMBLE, and we should be reaching out to other campuses and finding ways to learn from each other.
So technically, you're still stupefied.
I'm stupefied.
It's impossible. There's no...
That makes impossible, I mean.
I'd like to recognize some of the stars of tonight's video who are in the audience. So if you could please stand and wave when I call out your name. From Summer Creek High School, Mr. Darrell Legaspe. In costume even. Mr. James Gaylord, Architectural Design Instructor. Along with students, Carissa Melendez, Samantha Grantham, Penise Loreno, Leah Troy, Devonte Patterson, Natalia Andrade. Oh, she couldn't make it, okay. Well, clap for her anyway. Blaine Adams, Jose De La Rosa Hernandez, and Lauren Argueta. All right. And from Timbers Elementary, we have Ms. Kim Fairchild. She is the Extended Learning Teacher. And we also have Mr. Brent McDonald here, Principal, Summer Creek High School. That was super cool. Thank you so much for sharing it with us tonight and all of your collaboration to inspire our young students to go on to Summer Creek High School in the areas of steam. So, thank you very much. Next, let's see. We are going to honor our Spelling Bee winners. Neta Whitaker, Elementary ELA Coordinator, is going to come forward and introduce this year's Spelling Bee winners.
Each year, UMBLE ISD hosts a Spelling Bee for grades three through eight. Students first participate at the campus level, and winners of the Campus Bee move on to the district-level Spelling Bee. The competition this year was really intense. It lasted a total of 22 rounds. The 2019 UMBLE ISD Spelling Bee Runner-Up from Green Tree Elementary is Alvika Rapalu. The 2019 UMBLE ISD Spelling Bee Champion is Eden Robertson from Creekwood Middle School. And Ian has been the Spelling Bee winner for UMBLE ISD for the last three years.
Next, I'd like to introduce Jerry Monbaron, who will introduce this month's superstaffers.
UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in making Team UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at a school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. This month's Superstaffer Awards is sponsored by United Community Credit Union. And joining us tonight from United Community Credit Union is Latonia Thompson and Jackie Cook. Can y'all come on up and join me? Thank you. Being honored as tonight's elementary superstaffer is Jocelyn Gregory from Pine Forest Elementary. Also joining Jocelyn up front is Sloan Simmons, the principal. Jocelyn Gregory is such an asset to our campus. She is willing to help wherever and whenever needed to support our students. She builds relationships based on trust and works individually with kiddos to ensure their happiness and safety. Jocelyn finds the students' strengths and builds upon them for success academically and socially emotionally. Ms. Gregory is a ray of sunshine on our campus. Congratulations. Being honored tonight as the secondary superstaffer is Kelly Wells. Sorry, let me try that over again. Kelly Wells, congratulations. Kelly is from Kingwood Middle School, and joining her up front is her principal, Bob Adderbury. So this is what was written about Kelly. Though Mrs. Wells wears many hats, social studies teacher, academic team lead, and cheer coach, she consistently provides each student in her class with the support that they need for success. She goes above and beyond each day in making sure that her students understand the content, have the tools that they need to excel, and knows she believes in each and every one of them. She tirelessly advocates and provides support for all the teachers on her team, acting as a sounding board, fearless leader, and cheerleader. With Mrs. Wells, our students become more than just better students. She helps them to become better people, and that alone is pretty special. Her patience, devotion to her students, and leadership qualities deserve to be celebrated today and every day. Congratulations. Being honored tonight as the support superstaffer is Cipriano Guerrero. Come on up, Cipriano. Thank you. And joining him up front is Chris Johnson, his supervisor. So Cipriano is in maintenance in the HVAC temp tech. And this is what was written about Mr. Cipriano. Cipriano has been with UMBLE ISD for 19 years. He started in grounds and worked hard to advance himself achieving his goals. Cipriano's current position is in HVAC temp tech and is performing the duties of temp tech and HVAC mechanic. He is always here and does whatever's asked of him. He comes in early and stays late, and he's also a part of the emergency call-out team. He also gives extra time to the UMBLE ISD rodeo. Cipriano is very deserving of this award due to his commitment and determination to supporting learning through service. Congratulations, Cipriano. All three?
And that concludes our accommodations and recognitions for this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Fagan, and congratulations once again to all. Next, on our list here, we will have questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. The Board encourages citizens from the districts and employees to speak on anything pertaining to education issues no longer... being no longer than five minutes. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue is mentioned and is listed on tonight's agenda, then the Board will defer discussion until appropriate time during the meeting. With that said, the first on our list is going to be Ms. Charlotte Moffett. Is Charlotte... Okay. Hey, student. Can approach the podium there, Charlotte? And whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Moffett, and I'm a fifth grader at Shadow Forest Elementary School. I recently starred the UMBLE ISD Art Cause, which is advocating for the 17 elementary schools that don't get year-round art. Our mission is to give students the equal opportunity to year-long art classes, allowing them to freely express themselves in a calm and welcoming environment. We're trying to accomplish this goal by the end of the school year and hope that year-long art classes in all elementaries will be put in effect for next year's school term. At first, I had starred the Shadow Forest Art Cause, hoping that our wonderful art teacher, Mrs. Toensfeld, would be able to stay year-round next year. As I was designing the T-shirts, I realized something was missing. I recognize that there's so many other Mrs. Ts that are having to leave their schools throughout the year. This also means that thousands of students are then left without art. That's when I changed it to the UMBLE ISD Art Cause. I have recently met with Dr. Roger Brown, Houston Hayes, and Stacia Gower. I understand from their explanation that budget is the complication here, but I'm still not following how this is all fair. We have one year-round fine art, music, yet art is being left out. I have been researching and finding more information. I found that art reduces violence by letting the students express their emotions. It affects language development for younger students that are learning colors and shapes. I noticed that students learn these things in regular class, but developing minds tend to forget things. And reviewing that with them by having them incorporate it in their art will truly affect them. Studies have shown that art improves children's academic performance rates when involved in consistent art classes. I found that art also improves motor skills. Even scribbling with crayons, pencils, or markers, making shapes, drawings, and lines will affect a child's motor abilities. Art improves social skills by letting the students explain their piece and what it means to themselves. UMBLE ISD wants all students to participate in the portrait of a graduate competencies, but what they aren't considering is that art fits into every one of those categories. Art fits into the communicator category by listening to classmates and the teacher. Art is included in the global citizen category by building empathy, sympathy, tolerance, and cultural knowledge for communities all over the world. We incorporate art into the critical thinker category when we fuse mistakes, such as unintentional marks, into our artwork. When we take risks, our open-to-ideas displays self-expression, adaptability, and flexibility, we are known as creative innovators. Doing group pieces and activities cause us to be leaders and collaborators. We are personally responsible when we persevere and have confidence. These traits are necessary in order to complete the task. Art is so valuable to our students, yet we think it's acceptable to forget about those benefits and push year-round art to the side. This is a problem. I've prepared a pamphlet containing information about our cause. We have our cover, and on the inside of that cover is a little bit about us and what we're hoping to achieve. Our next page is our mission statement. We have also included new information that we recently found. A QR code for my Adobe Spark presentation I have prepared, including the link, and the link-in QR code to our online petition we've recently started. On the back, we have a list of things we have recently achieved, including our Instagram account, T-shirts, and the invitation to come visit our booth at the Fine Arts Festival on April 27. If I may, I would like to come give you the pamphlet we've prepared for you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Moffett. Next, we'll have Mr. Carlos Medina.
Can you hear me? Good evening, my name is Carlos Medina. I am the father of four children in the UMBLE ISD district. And today, I'm representing a group of parents from Ridge Creek Elementary. And we have a letter we'd like to address to the Board and to the audience. Dear Board and Audience, we, the bilingual parents of Ridge Creek Elementary, are here tonight to report several issues that have occurred with the registration of students in recent years within the bilingual program. This has negatively affected the number of enrolled students and the class sizes. The district's planning on closing the bilingual program due to low registration from kindergarten to second grade, affecting parents, students, siblings, who were informed of this decision only two weeks ago. In an area where 46% of the students are Hispanic, there have been issues with the registration process for the bilingual program, such as the many parents have confused or feel confused at the time of registration with the home language survey they need to fill out. The school does not provide parents with sufficient information about the benefits of the different language services provided by the district. Parents are not well-informed by the school staff in their native language of the benefits of set programs. Parents and students have been persuaded to resign the bilingual program by staff members, even if students are not ready to leave the program, only to stay in RCE, which is Ridge Creek Elementary, and avoid being transferred. Parents have not been warned of the risk of students exiting the program early, such as being left behind due to the different style of teaching between regular English and bilingual classes. School administrators have recommended parents whose English is limited to place their children in an ESR program to be able to attend Ridge Creek Elementary. Spanish-speaking parents who are inquiring over the phone have been told there are no bilingual programs offered at Ridge Creek Elementary, discouraging them from enrolling their children at Ridge Creek Elementary, or fearing to be transferred to distant schools, forcing them to alter the selections related to the native language spoken at home. We demand that these issues are properly investigated and evaluated. Ridge Creek Elementary principal and staff have not provided families with accurate and prompt information, nor informed the bilingual community about the why's, when, and how was the decision made or explained the reasons for the district to close the program. This decision, we feel, has been made with the purpose of segregating bilingual children in order to get better start test passing scores. And very important, and to me, this is one of the most important points. This program not only brings a special sense of belonging to our students, but also the opportunity for many low-income Hispanic parents who rely on Spanish spoken at the school to help their kids at home with their education. Those affected are not only students, but also the parents and the families and siblings that need to change from school to school. We have addressed our concerns and personally had meetings with the Ridge Creek Elementary principal, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, two Assistant Supervendents, the multilingual department coordinator, and had a phone conversation with the Deputy Superintendent. During the meeting of two weeks ago at the school, the principal and the Director of Curriculum falsely promised to provide parents with supporting data and answers to a multitude of questions. And to date, we have not received any single answer to those questions. And the Deputy Superintendent gave us a phone call, and he offered to investigate this matter further. To this day, we have not received any response. Tonight, we delivered to you an authorized petition with signatures from more than 200 bilingual parents, 202 actually. And we demand equal education opportunities for language minority children within a bilingual education program from pre-K to the fifth grade at Ridge Creek Elementary, where virtually one out of two students are Hispanics. This, without a doubt, a difficult time of uncertainty for many parents and our children. And we expect you to address this situation immediately and deliver the decision later than May 14, which is your next board meeting. Thank you for your time. And signed by the bilingual community at Ridge Creek Elementary, which they're standing here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Bring it over here. Bring it this way. Yeah. Yeah, bring it. All right, thank you. All right. Next on our list here, we're going to have Mr. Tony Austin.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Harvey was a devastating event for many of us and so many in our community. Not the least of those affected were the faculty, pupils, and families of our Kingwood High School. About 10 days after the flood, we were visited by the leadership of our International Foundation and Texas Lions leadership. And one of the places we visited was the high school, which 10 days after the flood was a wreck. Just a wreck. The foundation had already donated $100,000 to relief efforts here, and they then went on to raise well more than $1 million for Texas relief efforts. When it looked as though we had the opportunity to use some of the money in our area, I immediately spoke to Melina Lopez, who works for the district and is a member of our Lions Club. And she worked for Dr. Michael Nasra to identify items that met our grant criteria, because it's tough criteria. The giant video wall in the gym that we're providing will have a really positive effect on the students and visitors alike. And the special education materials that were lost that we are replacing, they have a very special place in our heart. We are great supporters of that. We have supported the mosaic program. And also, we are regular supporters of including kids. Our role as Lions is to identify community needs and solve them. I'm going to ask our District Governor, Kahl, just to talk about the grant that we're handing over this evening. And then Neil, if you want to come up and join us. Neil is going to hand over an award that we have donated. We have donated money back to LCIF in recognition of Dr. Fagan.
The Lions Clubs International is the largest non-governmental service organization in the world, with over 1.45 million members worldwide in over 210 countries and geographic areas. Lions Clubs International has over 101 years of rich heritage and service to mankind. And we focus mainly on vision, world hunger, diabetes, the environment, and pediatric cancer. We're always looking for new members. Lions Clubs International Foundation was founded in 1968 as Lions charitable arm. The foundation supports the compassionate work of Lions worldwide. The foundation supports the compassionate work of Lions worldwide by providing grants for local and global projects to help people see better, hear better, combat measles, provide disaster relief, support youth, and improve communities. In the early 1990s, Lions raised $140 million for river blindness. In the early 2000s, another $205 million. By doing so, we've almost eliminated river blindness in South America and coming close in Africa. In 2013, Lions partnered with GAVI and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, we raised $30 million, which they matched. 8.7 million children were immunized for measles and saved an estimated 61,000 lives. In August 2017, Hurricane Harvey, a four-day event, hit. On the second day, Lions Clubs International Foundation called us to tell us they had already sent $100,000 for relief. After that, almost $1 million more. $60,000 immediately went out for holiday spirit to help families deal with Christmas that they had lost. Another $280,000 went out in restoration grants to help individual homes. We've helped the Buckner's Children's Homes, the Plaschus Peer Project, YMCA in Port Arthur, Victoria Park, Corps of Engineers Park, and Port Aransas, just to name a few. And now, the Kingwood High School. It's a great pride, we, the Lions of Texas, are able to help the humble ISD recover from Harvey with this check for $103,250.92.
Hello, I'm Neil Lander, I'm the president of the UMBL Noon Lions Club. I just kick myself for not bringing enough membership applications, we've got a nice group here. Okay. I have another presentation to make, but let me give you a little background to it. Our club embraces our relationship with UMBL ISD over the years through the Vision Program, where we provide eye exams and glasses for students that can't afford it. That's typically over 100 per year. And we also contribute to the several special need grants. These are a large part of our community service. So our club, through Lions Club International, recognizes outstanding individuals by bestowing on them an award that is named after our founder, Melvin Jones, back in 1917. The Fellowship Award is our highest form of recognition and embodies humanitarian ideas consistent with the nature and purpose of Lionism. Our club made that contribution to LCIF, like Tony mentioned, so that in this recipient's name, there be more funds that we can contribute more to grant cycles. So, for her incredible effort in creating and implementing a plan to maintain UMBL ISD education program after Harvey with a flooded Kingwood High School, and for fostering our continued relationships with our Vision Program and our special grant program, we'd like to present this award to Dr. Elizabeth Fagan.
Okay, thank you, Tony and the Lions Club. Next speaker will be Gail Sampley with our UMBL ATPE Legislative Chair.
Good evening, my name is Gail Sampley. I am a retired elementary behavior teacher. My colleagues Stacy Ward, James Ellis, and I represent the UMBL Association of Texas Professional Educators. James is a retired UMBL High School government teacher, and Stacy is a fifth-grade math and science teacher at Timbers Elementary School. She serves on our Board of Directors of the state organization and is a candidate right now for ATPE State Treasurer. ATPE has been a strong voice for Texas educators since 1980. It is the leading educators association in Texas with over 100,000 members statewide. With its strong collaborative philosophy, ATPE speaks for classroom teachers, administrators, future retired, and paraeducators, and works to create better opportunities for Texas's 5.4 million public school students. ATPE is a professional organization, not a union, and is the ally and the voice of Texas public education. UMBL ATPE has 1,771 local members. Louis Moscolo from Kingwood High School is the UMBL ATPE president. Louis is at his school tonight, hosting a rocket expo so that his students can show their parents their final rockets that they have designed before they spin out. So, it is my great pleasure to stand here and to invite you and the community to the Candidate Forum for UMBL ISD School Board, which UMBL ATPE is hosting this week. The forum will be on Thursday night, April 11th, at the Performing Arts Center of Atascocita High School from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock in the evening. It will be moderated by our ATPE Executive Director, Dr. Shannon Holmes from Austin, Texas. All seven candidates have accepted our invitation to participate. The public is cordially invited and encouraged to attend. We have brought red shirts like ours for you to wear to help us advertise the Candidate Forum for UMBL ISD School Board. No volunteer job affects our citizens and local community more than that of a school board trustee. Let me say that again, because it's really important. No volunteer job affects our citizens and our local economy more than that of a school board trustee. Our schools today are educating the workforce of the future, which will drive the economy and the quality of life in this community. The actions taken by a school board have wide consequences and lasting effects. Citizens need to vote wisely, whether they vote early or on Election Day, May 4th. So, attend our Candidate Forum if you care about the 43,771 UMBL ISD schoolchildren and the 5,308 employed full-time who nurture and teach them. UMBL ATPE encourages you to come and listen to the candidates' ideas. We urge you to come to school on Thursday night to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, Mr. Ellis, Gail, Stacy, thank you so much. We'll see you guys Thursday night. Next, we will have public comments by our board members, and I'm going to start with Mr. Carney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say that that STEAM video Hogwarts at the Creek, that looked awesome. I know there was a lot of time and effort, I'm sure, that went into putting that program together. You know, I love the STEAM aspect of it, but I also love the teaming aspect of it between our schools. So, a lot of times, you know, we kind of have the tendency to operate on our own island and maybe not coordinate together, but to see all those schools working together and utilizing our high school students as kind of leaders for our younger students, I think that's awesome, just a tremendous program. We do it again next time, I want to go check it out, that looks really cool. I also wanted to thank my fellow trustee, Mr. Keith Lopez, it's his last meeting tonight. I've only known Keith for a short amount of time, but learned a ton in this short amount of time. You know, I reflect on his service, and he's been a board member since I graduated from college, and I just can't imagine... That's a long time, right there, Keith. He's been through a lot. Keith's been through a lot, he's made some tough decisions along with his fellow board members, appreciate his leadership. I know what it's like to serve the community and to do so for such a long period of time. Just absolutely fantastic, so thank you, Keith, appreciate your service. Last thing I wanted to say is to the Lions Club, I really, really appreciate your donation to Kingwood High School. You know, the district has done a tremendous job to weather the storm financially, sorry for the pun, but, you know, to get help from everybody is amazing, and, you know, we're still waiting on a big check from FEMA, so every little dollar helps. So, really, really appreciate the generosity and the support. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Colin. Next, we'll have Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to our super staffers, and I'll ditto what Mr. Carney said about the Hogwarts at the Creek, I thought that was a wonderful, creative, and fun way to introduce STEAM to our future high school students. Also, to the spelling bee winners, Ibika and Ian, very proud of their accomplishments. I just wanted to say, I think they're already gone, but they'll never have to rely on spell check, it's a pretty awesome thing, right? And the people that spoke tonight, just a couple of comments real quick. Charlotte Moffett, I wanted to thank you for your so eloquently speaking up for the arts, and I look forward to reading more about the UMBL ISD art cause. Mr. Medina, thank you for bringing the bilingual program at Ridge Creek Elementary to our attention. And also, thank you to the Lions Club for supporting our community. And last, Mr. Lopez, it has been an honor and pleasure serving with you these past two years. Please know I appreciate your leadership and guidance since I've been on the board during that time. And what I will miss most about you is definitely your frankness. I think we all need more of it, and to you, Kristi and Luke, please enjoy as you go forth. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Martina. Next, we will go ahead and go with Nancy. I'm going up in the order here, so, from the youngest to the oldest.
Oh, thanks. Anyway.
Not in that order, it wasn't you.
That's okay.
Youngest board member.
Colin's already made me feel a little younger. I just want to say ditto to everything that Mrs. Dixon said and Mr. Carney on our students and the activities that are happening at our high schools and the meshing and the things that kids are doing together now. It's absolutely outstanding. I want to thank the Lions Club for the donation, they do so much for all our children in the donations of the eyeglasses and everything, and we can't thank them enough. I also thank you, Mr. Medina, for bringing your concerns to the board. Mrs. Sampley, thank you with ATPE, they are very, very active in our district. I also want to thank the staff, the teachers, the administration. As we know, star season has started, and all our teachers and our custodians and our cafeteria workers and our principals and our... I can't say enough for what they do and what you do every day. And as we all know, school's not the same, school wasn't the same day, because it is what it is. But thank you to our staffs all over the district for making our children's lives as bearable on test days as possible. So, my compliments to you. And my fellow board member, I'm still calling you at 6:45 in the morning to ask for advice, so you're always going to be on my automatic dial, okay? Four years of learning so much about being a board member. Keith Lopez, I cannot thank you enough, but Kristi and Luke, I hope you get to enjoying, you know, because you have had this sharing for 12 years, 13 years. That's a long time to volunteer the many, many hours, and I can't thank you enough, and I've learned so much.
Thank you, Nancy. Let me rephrase, continuing with the youngest serving members to the oldest. We'll go to our past president, Ms. Conrad.
Thank you, Ms. President. I did want to say how much I enjoyed seeing the video about the STEAM Academy. I just love the learning experiences that kind of grow organically, you can tell what the impact they have, because not only is it a great idea to begin with, everybody jumps on board, and you even get students that want to be a part of that, that's fascinating. The only thing that worried me was the little girl who said that she thought what she thought high school was going to be like, so I hope she doesn't think it's going to be like that every day. No pressure over there. Let's see, Charlotte, how brave of you to be able to get up here and speak in front of me, you did a fantastic job, and I can't imagine, I know how passionate you must be about this, because you organized and then took the initiative to go forth on this campaign, so we appreciate you bringing that to our attention and coming before us this evening. Mr. Lopez, just want to also thank you for your time and your dedication and your commitment to this district and making it a choice district in the state. You've helped us, you've had major contributions, wise counsel, I feel like we have a special relationship with Kristi and Luke here, we got to watch Luke grow up, basically, and I think we all have experienced some of the same challenges with you, so we kind of identify with one another pretty well. But I also find it's kind of funny that, not only did I learn a lot from you, but I think it's kind of funny, I've tried to pressure you a lot to kind of change things and evolve, but I think your biggest contribution for me was pushing me to make some decisions. I think that where I wanted to be comfortable, you pushed me to make the right decisions for our district, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Mr. Sidon.
We are in mixed company and with children, so I'll make this as nice as possible. Mr. Lopez, 13 years serving the community that has meant the world to me for my entire life. You're one of the reasons that I wanted to run for the school board, because I wanted to be a part of something special, something that you and Representative Huberty and Dave Martin and so forth, and Mr. Cunningham, the groundwork that you guys laid years ago, it made it a lot easier for someone that loved this community to step into this role as a trustee and mesh with like-minded people. And when I say like-minded people, we didn't always agree, we haven't always agreed, but at the end of the day, it's what's best for the students of UMBL ISD. And that's what you taught me. My second board meeting up here, there was an issue in front of us, and I didn't have all the information. I didn't know I was supposed to ask for it, I thought you were just going to be giving it, and you'd just read it and you'd go on. And I was given the information here at the board table in the middle of the board meeting, and then asked to vote on it, and Mr. Lopez, in his infinite wisdom, just kind of leaned over and kind of whispered something in my ear, and when he did, it really kind of set me off, and so, I'll be forever known as the board member that threw papers in a second board meeting and screamed in haw... meeting and screamed and hollered, but in all sincerity, though...
I encouraged you to do it. I didn't promote it, I encouraged it.
That is true. Then he goes, "Dude, I didn't think you were really going to do it." But that's kind of the relationship Keith and I have had for the last eight years. We've been in the trenches together. We've been on the battlefield together. Watched my kids grow up. I've watched Luke grow up. Jen and Christie have a special bond as trustee spouses, and you guys, even though you're leaving this board, y'all will always be part of our family. And I appreciate that more so than anything you've done for this community as your partnership and being part of my family.
Thank you, Robert. And I too want to say thank you again, once again, to Ms. Moffett. Thank you for coming up and sharing your concerns to the Ridge Creek family. I know that the administration will be getting in contact with you, so I'm not really worried about that. And to all that have spoken tonight and to our super staffers. Keith, I've been with you 12 of your 13 years, and all I can really say is just say, well, first of all, to Christie and Luke, thank you. Thank you for sharing your father. Keith, thank you for making this board second to none, number one. We've been on that path, and even though we didn't get the official titles in the years before, we were number one. But I know that you're just stepping off the board, but you're not stepping out of the community. And so, that, in a sense, makes me feel good, in a sense, because I know I can always call you. And so, I just want to say once again, thank you. Love you, man. And before we do any of that, I'm going to ask all the board members to get up and come to the front, because I've got something for you, Keith.
You just go ahead and get in the front. Let me get in.
If I can't, we can bet.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
I know.
Okay, good. All right. Watch out, Liz. Watch out, baby. I don't want to come in your way.
All right, all right.
All right.
All right, Rob.
You and your family was with you in 2007. You were here at Rock Hill. You've always been with me. This is where you... From the distance? Get my head.
Y'all won't believe it, this guy was like this when I'm here.
Get along with the group.
First, I want to recognize Lions Club and Tony Austin. I don't know, everybody here may not know Tony, but he's a great, great, great guy. And the club, the Lions Club, everyone knows the wonderful things that they do in communities, and to give over, you know, $100,000 to our district with all the other needs out there is just quite amazing. So, I want to thank Tony and the Lions Club. Charlotte, I can't, you're in fifth grade, is that correct? Wow, that's unreal. You need to keep doing what you're doing. You're going to be successful in life and the world, and I appreciate your efforts with the art cause, and you've got a lot of people that are listening to you, and we'll see if we can make a difference with that. And as for the ATPE, you know, I'll kind of fold this into what I was going to say tonight. Gail was 100% correct in her speech tonight. School board is one of the most important positions that you can have in a local community and its effect on a community. And most districts don't understand that. UMBLE, however, does. School board elections historically here, at least as long as I've been around, have been fairly competitive. Last election was very competitive. And I think that's a good thing, though. And the reason why is because hopefully you kind of shake out the crazies and you get good citizens who want to put the children of the district first to serve on the board. And as long as I've been here for the last 13 years with all the different board members, including the board that I'm sitting with today, that's what we've done, is we've put kids first. We've got rid of, you know, factions and infighting and this and that and the other. We disagree. Of course, we disagree, but the end of the day is we put kids first. And that's what we all try to do, and that's what I try to do. We all want to do a good job. We all want to work hard, and that's what I've done, because this is where my family lives. This is where my son goes to school. This is where my friends' children go to school. And so, every decision that we've made has been through that perspective and that viewpoint. And even though we've been criticized massively that we do not do that, I can assure you, that's certainly not the case. Now, what's important is not really that I'm leaving the board. What's important is that we have an election coming up, and I want everyone to put on their Facebook or Twitters or to remind folks to go out and attend the forum, the ATPE forum that's happening this Thursday at 7:00 PM at a Tessa Cede High School. Because the person who's going to replace me, and I think Colin's got an opponent as well, we need to hear, we need to hear about it. We need to see if those are the people we want to represent us and have the impact that, again, what Gail said is true, on our local community. We want to make sure we elect the right people for that job. So, please, everyone, get the word out. Let's get all of our neighbors and friends to that forum. And I'll say one last thing. I would not be rolling off the board if I thought I needed to stay on the board. The district is in the best shape financially, administratively, now that it's been, I think, since I've been on the board. And I'm very proud about that fact. The future right now of this district, despite the Harvey impacts and all the stuff going on there, the future of this district is extraordinarily bright, and I'm very pleased with the condition that it's in right now. I was seriously considered not running four years ago, but then I was told by Dr. Scanzo, "Hey, I'm retiring," so I stuck around to make sure I played a role in hiring his replacement. I did play a role in that, and we hired Dr. Fagan, and I can tell you right now that that, of all the decisions that I've made in the 13 years that I've been on the board, that's the best decision that I've made as a board member. And I'm glad we have her. I'm glad we have her for a long time, because she has young children in this district, and she's going to be around for a long time. And I just can't wait to see the great things that we, as a district, are going to accomplish in the future. And that's what I have, Mr. President, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Still not through? I'm just joking. Comments by Superintendent, Dr. Fagan?
Thank you. Well, first, Mr. Lopez, had I known that good performance meant that you would leave, I may have rethought that. I remember it was about three years ago when we went through the process all together, many of us, and some of you weren't here, yeah, but it all worked out. And there were times, I want everybody to know, that where Mr. Lopez would say, "And then we need to do this, and then we need to do this," and then Mr. Sitten would say, "It'll be okay. We don't have to do all that." And he'd say, "I think you're going to convince her not to come," because the things that were said about Keith are true. He's honest. He's straightforward. He's no-nonsense. He cares very deeply about the school district. He's willing to give of himself. His family has sacrificed all in the name of UMBLE ISD moving forward, in a way that the community continued to be proud of, and he takes that very seriously as a member of this board. And I have been very lucky to have been able to work under his leadership with everyone else. The year I was president, I had some of my most interesting photographs as a superintendent that I've ever had, because of our slight height difference. Sometimes we would just make those look a little differently. But anyway, truly, we will miss you. I've tried very hard, by the way, to convince him that this was false advertising, that he wasn't supposed to leave, and that he had agreed to stay, because that was part of our agreement. And he said nice things, like, "You all are going to be just fine without me, and I'm not going anywhere." And I do believe that he's correct, that we're all going to be great in moving forward, but we're certainly going to miss your leadership, Keith, and everything that you've contributed to the district. So, thank you. Along with that, I wanted to share that on Thursday, April 25th, so you can mark your calendars again, we're filling up your April calendars tonight, at 9:30 AM at Charles Bender Performing Arts Center, you all are invited as UMBLE ISD was awarded a Texas Historical Marker in honor of the district's founding 100 years ago. So, we would love to have you join us and the Harris County Historical Commission for the unveiling of the Historical Marker at the Charles Bender Performing Arts Center. We will have student orchestras and vocal performances, guided tours of the Performance Arts Center, and also, I believe, Dr. Mo is going to give a little bit of a keynote on the history of UMBLE ISD. So, you're all invited and welcome to come, and please do. It's a big deal to be awarded a Historical Marker. Dr. Mo's done tons of heavy lifting in the Public Communications Department to make this happen for our community. So, as part of our 100-year celebration, we're very proud of this, and we'd like to have folks available in there for the unveiling. So, thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
I'm going to kind of take a point of privilege right here and call a few minutes recess. So, if folks would like to come up and say something to Mr. Lopez, that'll be fine. And if you really want to know the truth of it, I'm on medication, and so, I need to do something. Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We're going to go ahead and move right on into our updates from our board associations and committees. We'll move on with the Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee. Mr. Lopez, Chair.
No reports.
No report from you, okay. Building and Planning Committee, Ms. Martina Lamont Dixon, Chair.
I sent all of you a copy of the agenda summary. Do you have any questions? If you don't have any questions, we can move on. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Then next, we'll have our Finance Committee, our Chair, Mr. Robert Sitten.
Yeah, I want to kind of reiterate some of the things I said last month. For those of you that are here, we talked a little bit about school finance, and Ms. Morrison also commented on that when we got to the advocacy committee, so we kind of tag teamed that one. A lot of things have changed. A lot of things have happened, and they're still changing, still happening. I've been on the phone with Representative Huberty quite a bit over the last week or so. When we last talked, we were in the range of about $100 per student, which is on the very low end of the range in the state of Texas. At one point, we were up over $500 per student. There was also no raises for teachers in that HB3. Then it went to amendment stage. Once it got through amendment stage, HB3 ended up with, I believe, 1,850 for teacher raises, but it brought UMBLE ISD down to, depending on which reports you're looking at, and if Dan sees the video, he's going to yell at me for looking at the reports, but 275 to 300 per student, which still keeps us at the low end of the range. Issues, we don't have a huge commercial tax base. The people that are shouldering the burden to educate kids in UMBLE ISD are our taxpayers. Over 80% of our tax revenue come from individual homeowners. So, we don't get the recapture money back, because we didn't pay any in. So, the large school districts, like Houston Independent School District, they get all their recapture money back. Over $200 million is coming back to them because of the recapture going away. The other thing is, while our population of free and reduced lunch is growing, it is still a relatively small number, so we don't get that credit either. So, we're in a little bit of a bind just more as putting together our budgets. You may remember, we postponed our last budget meeting, because we still don't know how these numbers are going to come out. So, now the bill, the SB3 and HB3 are going to committee, and anything can happen when it goes to committee. Last legislative session, we thought we had some things worked out, and then it totally blew up in committee, and then nothing happened. Nothing came out of it. So, you know, I applaud Representative Huberty for what he's doing, and I know he's working hard for us. And he's working hard for all kids in the public education system in Texas. And overall, I think the things that they're trying to accomplish are very worthy and very good. We all want to add money to special ed. We all want to add money to those that are on free and reduced meals and so forth. Those are all worthy causes, absolutely. All we're asking for is for our fair share. You cannot tell me that students in UMBLE ISD are not worthy of the same money per student that Austin ISD is worthy of. You just, you can't do that. And I'm using them as an example. And they're not on the high, high end, they're on the high end. There are other school districts that are on the high, high end. So, when we're talking about school finance, it's not over. Just because HB3 has passed and SB3 has passed, so, you know, the Senate bill had $5,000 for teachers, House bill, 1,850, it's probably going to be somewhere in the middle, if they do it at all. And also, there is not a long-term commitment, I want everybody to hear that, there's not a long-term commitment coming out of Austin to make sure that money is there year after year after year after year. So, I know there's a lot of miscommunication about that. That raise is not for the infinity and beyond, okay? So, I'm saying all that to say, get on the phone, call Representative Huberty, call your legislators, call anybody that you know that is in Austin that's working for public ed. I talked to Dr. Scanzo about it, and he agreed. It's a great bill for the masses, but there's a lot of disparity, a lot of inequity between school districts. And it's really putting school districts like us in a bind to get ready for next year's budget, because we don't know what that number's going to look like coming out of Austin. So, that's my soapbox dealing with finance. If we want to talk... And it's really putting school districts like us in a bind to get ready for next year's budget, because we don't know what that number's going to look like coming out of Austin. So that's my soapbox dealing with finance. If we want to talk about STAR, I can get on that soapbox real quick, because Dr. Fagan kind of got on to me, because I scream about it behind closed doors, and then I said I wasn't going to kick that dog anymore. But that is something else. There's a couple of bills out there that are pending, and you're probably going to talk about that, so I'll shut up.
No, you got it.
But there's a couple of bills out there dealing with the STAR exam and the inadequacy and the unfair aspects of the grading system of the STAR and the questions and so forth. And our kids are going through the STAR exam this week, and EOC's this week. So, you know, an 8th grader, if they want to be mastery, they need to be reading at about the 11th grade level. We never told our parents that. So they think little Johnny is failing whenever they're really reading at or above their grade level. So we need to be on the phone. There's more things happening with public education in this legislative session than in, probably in two decades. If it doesn't get changed for the kids' benefit, this go-around, it may never happen again, or at least for another two decades. I'm just telling you, I can't impress upon you enough. Call. Get involved, because we might not get another chance. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Sitten. Our Chair for our Advocacy Committee, Ms. Morrison?
I'll get on the ditto for him in just a moment. I want to thank our law enforcement and community partners for supporting the UMBLE ISD Advocacy Committee this school year. Our committee met in August, October, and March. And our focus this year, we chose to focus on safe and secure schools. The work of this committee, though, resulted in, we had drafted legislative design to help students with health conditions obtain the medicine they might need off campus should we ever have to evacuate due to an emergency. Enhanced communication between community law enforcement agencies and our schools. I understand agencies will soon be receiving invitations from each school to visit. Ongoing discussions about radio interoperability, which we found we need so desperately to make sure that it's consistent throughout. We had many, many participants that worked on our committee, from the City of UMBLE, Harris County Precinct 4, Jack Kegel's office, Precinct 4 Constable's office, Houston City Council Dave Martin's office, the Harris County Fire Marshal, Harris County Sheriff's Office, the Houston Police Department, the UMBLE Police Department, Insperity, Kingwood Medical, the Lake Houston Area Chamber of Commerce, the Lake Houston Area Economic Development Partnership, Lone Star College Kingwood, Memorial Hermann Northeast Hospital, State Representative Dan Huberty's office, State Senator Brandon Crichton's office, and the Lake Houston YMCA. We can't thank you all for your continued focus on keeping our kids safe. These people gave their time, they gave great discussion, they have participated with us, and they are working with us diligently to keep our kiddos safe. So I want to thank them very, very much. It was a very productive committee this year, and we're very proud of the work that we produced. Also, I want to, again, along with the legislative part of that advocacy group, Mr. Sitten is so right. Parents, constituents, you need to call. They listen to you, they listen to voters. They don't necessarily listen to us as closely as they listen to you sometimes. We feel like sometimes the old talking bobblehead, you know, we work and work and work and work, but if you back us up and you call, it will help. Like Mr. Sitten said, this is the year to do it. And right now, who knows what will come out of House Bill and Senate Bill 3, but we know that we need things for our children and we need funding. If you don't speak for us, who knows what will happen? So desperately, and STAR, just as I said before, life stops for days. I mean, the teaching stops for days. The assessment is inaccurate. To say that a 5th grader who doesn't master, you're testing him on the 7th grade level. This is inaccurate, and this is not good for our kiddos. It is time for everybody to speak up, and this is our chance. Do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, and thank you for your leadership. It's been a pleasure serving with you and Robert this year on this committee. We'll go ahead with the Education Foundation. Ms. Carney?
Thank you, Mr. President. So our big gala is coming up this Friday night, April 12th. There are still tickets available. If you haven't gotten one already, please go online to umbleisdfoundation.org while they last. Even if you don't go to the event on Friday, you can still participate in the auction, or the online auction that's going on right now for different items. I would encourage you to get on there so that my wife doesn't end up winning every single item. I think I've gotten about 20 emails today about bids. So I might be coming, asking you guys for a second job, we'll see, see how that goes. There's some really great packages in there that you can bid on from the comfort of your own home. Remember, it's for a good cause, supporting our schools, so please go on the foundation's website to start bidding now. And one reminder as well, we've got the Prize Posse coming up on Friday, May 3rd. So that's where we go out and we basically surprise the teachers with all of the different grants that are being awarded. And it's a really special day to be able to go in there and just see the excitement on their faces and see that their, you know, great idea to benefit our students is being funded by the foundation. So I participated in that last year, it was really awesome. Anybody is welcome to join and go do the Prize Posse. So if you're interested in that, please contact the foundation, go on the foundation website. I would encourage everybody to be involved in that, it's a really awesome day. So that's it for the foundation.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Kingwood neighborhood council, Ms. Dixon?
Nothing to report as the meeting conflicted with our board training. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Trustee Dixon, I would ask if you would help me with action items, action on items from closed session?
4A?
Yes.
Student expulsions. I move that the board approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. All in favor? All opposed by the same? Which carries? Okay, trustee Dixon.
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Second.
Okay. In second, all in favor? All opposed by the same? Thank you. Next, we'll move over to our consent agenda, and for those out there, you know, we have an opportunity, we as a board have an opportunity to review all the agenda items prior to the meeting, so really, there's no really lengthy discussion needed. If there is some, they will get with the proper personnel superintendent. If not, then we will pull whatever we still have questions on. So trustee Dixon, if you will help me?
Okay.
We will start 5, on the consent agenda, 5A, the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting. That is a consent. B, approval of minutes for a special board meeting. That is a consent. 5C, goods, professional service, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or 25 individually. That is a consent. 5D, 2018, 2019 construction and construction-related purchases. We have a consent there. D, budget transfers and amendments, including election cost increase, and C, NS trade purchases.
That's E.
E, that was E, everybody. That's a consent. 5F, bond fund transfers and amendment. Consent. G, tax refunds. Consent. H, waivers of PNI, penalty in interest. Consent. 5I, extension of bank depository contract. Consent. J, financial advisor services. Consent. K, consideration of architect selection for Lakeland Elementary School replacement. Consent. 5L, consideration of architect selection for Kingwood Middle School replacement. That is a consent. 5M, DDC controls upgrade at Kingwood Park High School and Creekwood Middle School. That's a consent. N, 5N, multi-campus mechanical renovations. 5O, paging system replacement at Deerwood Elementary. Consent. P, auditorium air conditioning replacement at UMBLE High School and Summer Creek High School. Consent. Q, summer roof project at Woodland Hills Elementary. Excuse me. Consent. R is going to be a resolution in support of Senate Bill 7, flood relief. Consent. S, First Amendment order for trustee election. amended, we're amending that. Okay, that's a consent. T, approval of the selection of additional education consultants. Consent. U is the interlocal agreement for HGAC transportation grant. That's consent. And if you would, trustee Dixon, read me back for the approval?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the following items by consent, 5A through 5U.
Second.
Been properly motioned in second. All in favor? All opposed by the same? Okay, next, we'll move out into our information items, and I have a statement to read under information item 7A. This is pertaining to the Board of Trustees' continuing education announcement. All members of the UMBLE Independent School District Board of Trustees have completed the continuing education credit required by law, with the exception of Mr. Keith Lopez, who will be stepping down from the board following the May 5, 2019 election. So we're all good. 7B, okay, that's been, that's the information item, so we're all good. 7B, policy revisions, task be update, this will be 112, information. Stephanie, we're good? Okay. Board members, any questions? See legal, the financial service report, any questions? You've got Dr. Fagan, Mr. Seale, and Mr. Sitten, Chair? Okay, how about on A here, consideration for future topics board business? Any parking lot items? Mr. Carney? None? Mr. Lopez? Oh, you're gone.
Uniforms. Uniforms.
Oh, yeah.
I think we should talk about uniforms.
Boundaries, uniforms and boundaries.
Y'all can have the boundaries.
All right. Is there any board member has anything on the parking lot? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Everybody be safe. 8:42.